All right, I'd like to call to order the regular school board meeting for District 64, Park Ridge Niles. Today is Thursday, May 13th, 2021. Why don't we start with a roll call? Phyllis, you're on.
Sodos?
Yes, here.
Witatawich?
Hey Nikki.
Here. Okay Pearl?
Here.
Kennedy?
Yeah.
Dallas?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Lubinski, here.
All right, everyone is present. The administration has asked us to go into closed session under 2C2, which is collective negotiation matters between the district and its employees. And so is there a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so Tom had the motion and Carol had the second. And why don't we take a vote on that, Phyllis?
Dallas?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Little?
Yeah.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Witatawich?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes. All right, so then now we will head to closed session since this was approved. So we will see you on the other side. All right, all right, this is the meeting of the school board for District 64, Park Ridge Niles. It is Thursday, May 13th, 2021. And the board was in closed session from about 6:35 to discuss collective contract negotiations. And so we are back in open session to begin the meeting. So why don't we take our roll call? Phyllis? Phyllis, I think you're on mute. It happens.
All right, Waitovich?
Here.
Sodos?
Here.
Pearl?
Here.
Dallas?
Here.
Lubinski, here. Kennedy?
Yeah.
Little?
All right, all right, thank you, Phyllis. All right, we will start with our pledge and Nikki is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all right, on to the opening remarks from the president. The only thing I have to share, and Phyllis was involved in this as well, is it seems like we're having some normalcy start. And that's exciting. Emerson hosted a student staff volleyball game and Phyllis and I were both volunteers there. And it was how many staff members came up and said, this just feels good. You know, I'm not sure if the teachers enjoyed it more, the students, there was just a great camaraderie. The teachers were easy on the sixth graders, but the eighth graders, they went full competition. So, so Phyllis, do you have anything to add to that?
I just thought it was an overall seemed to be normal with people and students and teachers get back together and they were so excited to be together in a room playing. And the teacher, that was a lot of fun. The teachers had a good time and the kids had a great time. So.
Yeah. So, all right, anyone else have anything to share, something that was happening at the schools?
Fields having their V show premiere tonight at the Pickwick, 67. Yep. During a pandemic, we did it.
All right, commercial for the Field V show. All right. All right, sounds good. We will now go to public comments. And before we do that, you'll notice we are meeting over Zoom. And we have done so during the pandemic and we can do this. Our comments can be sent to the email address provided or can attend in person at Emerson this evening. So just want to give some structure on public comments. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of the schools. Each person appearing before the board will be treated with courtesy and respect. And the board requests the same in return. In light of the privacy of personnel and student matters, commenters are strongly discouraged from speaking about individual staff or students during public comments. Commenters are instead encouraged to first raise such concerns privately with the board, president, or administration. The board, however, recognizes each commenter's First Amendment rights. Thus, it will not prohibit commenters from speaking about individual staff or students, subject to well-recognized exceptions under the First Amendment, such as obscenity, threats, fighting words, or incitements to violence. All right, so now that we have our public comment structure, checking if there are any public comments on non-agenda items. So Eric, is anyone at Emerson?
There is not anybody currently here.
Okay, thank you. And how about Natasha? Anything on email?
We have not received any public comments via email.
Okay, thank you. All right. So now we will move to the approval of the agenda. Any board members want to revise the agenda, delete, add? All right, hearing none. We will move on to an exciting part of the evening where we get to honor some of our student writers with the Young Authors Program.
Yes, thanks Denise. And you are right, we are very excited tonight to have this opportunity to talk directly about students and to students. So we have several of them in attendance tonight as well. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Megan Kiefer, and she's going to take it away from here. Megan?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm Megan Kiefer, as Dr. Olson said. And tonight I'm here to share with you the winners of the Young Author Contest. So for those of you who are new to the board or new to our community and listening, this is an annual writing contest where students in grades K through five are invited to submit a creative writing manuscript. This year, and actually I'm going to go ahead and share my screen before I get ahead of myself. This year we had 283 manuscripts submitted. So that's a really exciting number, especially given the crazy year we had. It's exciting to know that some of our students just really find an outlet in their writing and that they took the leap to share that writing with us. So I really want to thank and congratulate every one of those writers who submitted a manuscript. And we actually had more writers than the 283 because we had some collaborators. So some of the, some people partnered up and submitted one manuscript. So everyone deserves a congratulations. However, it's a big feat, as you might imagine. I have to thank the coordinators at each of the buildings for all their work. With all those manuscripts, the people you see on this slide here are the coordinators at each building and they're sort of tasked with reading all the manuscripts, finding volunteer judges, and choosing one winner per grade level. So then by the time they get to me, I get one winner per grade level from each of the buildings, K, and that spans again K through eighth grade. So I thank these coordinators for all the hours they spend reading and celebrating these young writers. Today, I'm here to share with you the nine winners from the district. So you see in front of you, we had across buildings, these are the nine who really rose above and are being recognized today with the Young Author Award. They truly have a talent for storytelling. It blows me away every year, and I am just certain that one, if not more of these writers will come back someday with a published book and we can all say, we knew them when, right? So without further ado, and I know most of them, if not all, are attending live today. So I know we can't see them, but they can see us. So we can just give them the silent parade for their accomplishments. So in kindergarten, we had two writers, Bronson Mesa and Keegan Moran from Field School who partnered up to write an adventure called The Treasure Hunt. You could see X marks the spot. In first grade, also from Field School, this is Noel Buchko, who wrote The Four Unicorn Seasons, which really celebrated friends coming together despite their parents' differences. And in second grade, our winner is Kaylee McInerney from Washington School. Her story, An Arctic Adventure showcased some really brave penguins who saved the Arctic and was published through a special program called Book Creator, which was very neat to read. And then in third grade here, we have Reese Coogan from Field School, who wrote the story, The Secret Society Mission. She wrote her adventure. That sounds like it might be the first in a series. There may be more to come. In fourth grade, we had, sorry, little snag there, Grace Cronin from Roosevelt School. And her story, Amy Shoots High, tells the story of a girl who never gives up, but then truly finds her inner strength was inside herself all along. In fifth grade, here is Annie Bowles. She is from Franklin School. And she wrote a story called Blast From The Past, who featured a time travel experience that brings lessons of acceptance across multiple generations. In sixth grade, we had Nevina Vukovich from Emerson Middle School. She wrote Wildlife Empire and highlighted two sisters who finds their true destiny in being brave warriors. And then we had our seventh grade winner also from Emerson. This is Avery Lamploda, who wrote a chilling thriller in her story, The Traveling Circus. And last, but certainly not least, we have another co-authorship here. Elizabeth Bordini and Charlotte Chapman are from Lincoln Middle School. And they authored this story that featured an alternate reality, or really alternate realities in their story down to earth. So again, you can say you heard it here, we knew them when, we just want to celebrate these young writers. And if you see, we were this year able to get long signs for each of their houses so that the community can recognize that an author lives here. So if you see that sign, give them a little beep or a wave of congratulations. Right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Megan. And also thank you for all your leadership on this project and with everything else that you worked on in the district. We really do appreciate it.
It's a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Just the creative titles and the drawings from the students. So that's exciting. Students, continue your writing. All right, we appreciate all what you're doing. All right. So we're going to continue on with our agenda and we've been doing during the pandemic and the spirit of transparency and communication, reporting on a COVID-19 update. So Dr. Olson, you are on.
Thank you. So first of all, I just wanted to share with the board that our metrics look extremely good. They've only been continuing to get better. Currently in Park Ridge, we're in the low 2% in terms of positivity rate and new cases per 100,000 are under 100 now. Niles has the same thing with cases and Niles is in the high 1%. So this could potentially be the lowest that we've been all school year. And we also, which seems to go along with that, had much fewer cases this week. So that's good as we start to get ready to finish up the year. And there's so many events going on. And we're just excited to be able to keep as many students in school as possible. The board may have heard today that the CDC came out with new guidance in regard to mask wearing. So just to remind the board that even though the CDC comes out with this, we have to wait until the Illinois Department of Public Health says, yes, this is what you should do for Illinois, or we're taking their agreement, but we're going to put it like this. And so we really just have to wait to see what that piece is going to be. So in essence, what it means then is that we are in a waiting period and that we still need to use all of our current guidelines unless those are replaced. As I've shared with the board before, we keep hearing rumors that, you know, they're going to release this big document of information for us to be able to set next year's guidelines. But unfortunately, we still don't have it. So when that does come out, then we can start truly planning for next year. But because last year, that guidance came out at the very end of June. And so we feel that our parents very much want to know, well, what is the plan going to be for the fall? Because I need to make the proper arrangements. And so what we're going to do is, we've decided that we are going to offer remote learning next school year with the condition that it would have to be for a medical reason, that a student has a particular condition or there's a condition within that household that is causing some type of safety risk. And that for those students, we will offer remote learning until that condition is no longer putting them in jeopardy, or we get to a point where the state says this is no longer what we're doing. I've heard all possibilities, the state could mandate certain things of the way it has to be with remote learning. They could say, we're not allowed to do remote learning, or they could leave it up to each individual district to decide. So anything we put out to the parents at this point has to have the big asterisk that any of this could change before we get to next school year. But here's where we are with the knowledge we have now. Here would be the options that you would have for next school year. And we're going to look to send that out to families on Monday. Let's see. We are very excited to be able to announce that we have an opportunity for District 64 students who are 12 and higher to receive the vaccine. Our middle school parents will receive that information tomorrow morning about how they can sign their children up for that. And also will be contained more information if they'd rather make an appointment with Cook County and go elsewhere. We have that information to provide to them as well. So we're very excited to be able to have this partnership with Jewel Osco and looking forward to being able to put that into place. And it will run very similarly to what we did for teachers earlier in the year. And then my last item is that I believe Denise wanted to touch base a little bit about future board meetings and where we may want to go from here, you know, in the pandemic.
Yes. So, so as Eric mentioned, we've been talking about, we've been meeting remotely since the pandemic started, the board has, and wondering when we want to transition to an in-person meeting. It seems like most of the surrounding districts have moved in person. If we think about the feeder districts to District 207, 62, 63, and 64, they are all back in person. So what are everyone's thoughts on having in-person board meetings?
My biggest question is if we're in person, are we still on Zoom?
That would be, that would be another decision for the board to make in terms of what you want to do about that.
Okay, because I feel like on Zoom, and we're in person, and we have to sit so far away to avoid the feedback, that it would just be, I mean, what's the point?
Oh, sorry. Okay, I wasn't understanding the question. So no, we wouldn't be talking on Zoom like that. We would be interacting with each other or the audience, just like we normally would. But whether the board wants to keep broadcasting in Zoom would be another thing to talk about at some point.
I see. But we could sit three feet apart.
Correct.
Okay, then I have no problem with that. My only objection is if we're still on Zoom and have to sit really far apart, so we don't pick up each other's microphones. And I don't see the point. But if we're in person and can actually talk with each other, then I have no problem with it.
Yeah, no one would wear headphones or anything like that.
I'm also fine with being back in person. And if we could, you know, do some type of live feed, whether it's Zoom or if it's through our YouTube channel or something else, that would be helpful. So that people who, you know, are the public, if they don't want to come in person so that they can still, you know, participate. So that's fine.
I'm fine coming in person as well.
I am as well. And I think it's a good idea to continue live streaming it if possible.
So Eric, I'm comfortable coming in in person. However, when the meetings used to be on Mondays, and then you move them to Thursdays during the pandemic, which is going to be an issue for me being in person, you know, have been able to leave my obligations and getting, you know, leaving from my office and getting to the suburbs on Thursdays, it's going to be a little difficult. So I might have to make, if we do plan on doing it and keeping it on Thursdays, I'm going to have to try to figure something out.
Okay, thanks, Tom. You were a little garbled. I didn't hear everything, but I think I got the gist of it. And when we made the move to Thursdays, it was with the thought that we would just continue to do this. But now, not only do we have the ability to have board members call in like we used to, but now we could have the opportunity for them to zoom in as well. And so that would be something that would be possible. But I see what you're saying in terms of your situation and whether we should go in person.
But you're okay going in person, Tom? It's just a scheduling issue is what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. How about Gareth? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm happy to go in person, though I favor a continued Zoom broadcast for those who, for the members of the public, not only, you know, when this is all over and said and done, not only just now, I think having a way for members of the public to, from a transparency and accountability standpoint, having a Zoom option for folks, I think is a really good, good thing if we can continue to do that indefinitely. The other thing I'd ask, I know Dr. Olson, you're up today, you gave, you know, you said that you have to wait for Illinois guidelines to catch up to CDC guidelines. If they're both guidelines, can you help me understand why we have to wait? And is that because we chose to follow Illinois guidelines? Or is it actually not a guideline and it's a mandate through the governor? That would be helpful to understand. And secondly, you know, if we are going to meet in person with the CDC guidance, again, today coming out, I think that, you know, that even our president has gone maskless, are we going to have to continue to wear masks as fully vaccinated individuals on school property? And if you can clarify why that would be the case?
Sure. Yep. So there was no choice that we made. And it's not a mandate, but we are asked to follow the guidelines by the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Health from them. If we start doing something that's not recommended by them, then we are in violation of the guidance, which carries certain things that, you know, we have to consider. So in some ways, when the CDC puts out an announcement, it doesn't mean anything to us. All it really does is, is it sets the stage that now Illinois has to give some kind of response. Are you agreeing with the CDC? Are you not agreeing? Why? What is the specific guidelines that you're going to give us, you know, in regard to that? So if Illinois said tomorrow, you don't have to wear masks in schools anymore, then we'd be able to do that. But as for now, we have to still follow the Illinois guidance, which says we have to wear a mask inside at all times.
And just to add to that, and you made the point, Gareth, it's, it's guidance from IDPH and ISB, but the governor issued an executive order geared towards schools that says you need to follow this guidance. So he's, it's more than guidance for us. He actually has an order in place while we're still under the disaster proclamation. And there's like five non-negotiables, masks, social distancing, there's a couple others. So it is more than just guidance. But like Dr. Olson said, the trend has been over the last three or four months, that as CDC moves, then a couple weeks later, IDPH moves.
Well, thank you. I think that's, that's very helpful because a lot of parents ask these questions. And whether they hear the word guideline, you know, it doesn't say mandate, but what I'm hearing from you is that the governor basically proclamated that a mandate that we have to follow the Illinois guidelines. The only leadway we have is interpretation of the guidelines.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Why don't we finish the conversation about our meetings and then we can go back and see if anyone else has any questions on Dr. Olson's COVID-19 update? So I'm hearing that everyone is willing to meet in person. As Dr. Olson and I were talking, when we've been in person, we're in a U, and we've been probably two feet apart when the board was meeting onsite. So it's probably not that much bigger that our formation will have to be. We might move our meetings to Emerson, just so there's some more space to spread out a little bit. And so do we want to then move our first in-person meeting? Do we want to move that way for the January 3rd, our Cal meeting about full day, committee of the whole meeting?
June 3rd, yes.
June 3rd. Did I say, what month did I?
You said January, but I don't want to be back in January.
No, let's wait till June. No, I'm just kidding.
We are, we are six feet masked. Is that still our mandate?
For, for, for unvaccinated adults, but vaccinated adults can be three feet apart.
Three feet masked.
Correct.
Yeah, I have a problem doing it June 3rd. That's fine.
So June 3rd, since, since all the board is vaccinated, we can do three feet apart. All right. All right, everyone is, anyone object to June 3rd, moving onsite? Okay, all right. So then we will plan on that. So we'll go back to in-person and we will look at how we will do the streaming of the meeting, the public meeting of the board. Okay. All right. So we'll look at that. Thank you. And how about any comments, questions about Dr. Olson's COVID update?
I'm very excited that we can vaccinate 12-year-olds. That's great. I wish I had a kid old enough, but.
Right.
Is it onsite, like at one of those schools?
Yeah, it'll be at Emerson, like after hours in the evening.
That's great.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll continue to have a COVID-19 update at our, we'll have a next one at our June board meeting. And let us move on. We get to have another celebration tonight, a celebration recognizing our tenured teachers. And so we're going to hand it over to Dr. Joel Martin.
Thank you. This is one of the best parts of my jobs and one of the funnest things I get to speak about all year long at a board meeting. And I also think it's appropriate that the night that we celebrate some of our students, that we recognize some of our teachers. And tonight, we're here to recognize teachers who are moving from probationary status to tenure. And that will happen at the end of this school year. But for those who are unaware, let me explain a little bit about what that means. So when a teacher is hired, that's just not the end of it. They're not just hired and we kind of dump them in a class, so to speak. Illinois School Code says that a teacher that's been hired is probationary for four years. So what that means, it's during that time that the district really looks at these individuals and says, are they going to meet or are they meeting the high expectations that we have for our teachers, our community, our parents are expecting our teachers to really be at this high level to bring the best for our kids. And so we have this four-year period where we train teachers. They go through extra meetings in our first year. They have extensive evaluation processes where they go through a lot of informal observations, many more formal observations than tenured teachers do. They have goal-setting meetings. And each year, we're looking to see if they meet that standard and if they're continuing to grow. And it's not easy, because not only do you have to learn about your craft. So if you're a first grade teacher, you're learning all the things that are out there to be a first grade teacher, but you're also learning about District 64, how we do things, you know, from the minute things of, hey, where's the copy machine? And where do I park my car? To the things about, you know, how do our schedules work? How do we communicate with parents? How do we run our parent teacher conference meetings? What are the expectations around these things? It's a lot of work for non-tenure teachers. And again, it's not easy. But the individuals we're going to speak about tonight have not only done this, but they have done it exceptionally well. We're extremely happy for them. Because not only is removing the title of probationary teacher about just, you know, saying, hey, now you're tenure, but I view it as a sign of commitment. And it's a commitment on both sides. It's a commitment from the district to say, we want you here for the long haul. You have proven that you can do your job and do it really well. And we want you to be a part of the District 64 community for many years to come. And on the teacher's part, it's also the part for them to test out District 64. Is this where I want to make my home for the long term? Am I happy here? Do I feel supported? Is this the type of community that I want to work in and I want to be growing? Is this the type of community that I want to work in and I want to be growing? And the teachers have made that commitment to us and we have made that commitment to them. And they have done it again very well. So I'm going to start by reading their names. They can't be with us here tonight. And just know that they'll also be getting a certificate that we will be going out to the schools and giving them. And I'm also going to say this, I feel like this is a little bit like promotion night as I read these names. So I apologize to any of the staff members if I somehow get it wrong, but I'm going to recognize them now. Our teachers who will be receiving tenure at the end of the 2021 school year are Haley Amato from Franklin School, Marie Clara Pooley from Emerson, Dana Bailey from Roosevelt, Rebecca Bard from Emerson, Kaleigh Bazark from Lincoln, Sarah Betty from Franklin, Christina Carfininini from Carpenter, Paul Sangrati from Emerson, Julia Egan from Franklin, Megan Ferris from Washington, Phil Faustman at Field, Amanda Gump from Lincoln, Emily Hoffman from Washington, Paula Hunt-Vollis from Roosevelt, Catherine Herman from Field, Pamela Johnson from Carpenter, Maria Lacardist from Roosevelt, Jet Levin from Lincoln, Catherine Luna from Lincoln, Colleen Miller at Carpenter, Jennifer McCarskey at Lincoln, Vanessa Placco, who actually goes by Vanessa Caggy, who's over at Field, Jessica Radick from Field, Brittany Reedy from Washington, Abby Shaw, who splits time between both Lincoln and Emerson, Shannon Swingy, who's at Emerson, Chris Bana at Lincoln, and Anja Villarreal, who is at Emerson. Again, I'd like to congratulate them. So on behalf of the administration and the Board of Education, I'd like to very early say we're going to remove the title of probationary teacher and recognize you as tenured teachers in District 64. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin. That is exciting for teachers. It's exciting for our district. And we look forward to seeing all the things they will continue to do as they work in our district. So thank you. All right. All right, we're going to continue on our agenda. And periodically, we have an update on the work of PT3. I know we've had a lot of acronyms tonight. There's another one. So PT3 stands for Parents is Teachers Talking Together. So we are going to turn it over to Dr. Leanne Frost.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Pearl. I'm happy to report to the board tonight the progress that Parents and Teachers Talking Together Group, or PT3, has been making. PT3 was put together about three years ago. And I did provide a summary of their activities in the board packet for tonight. So I'm not going to highlight those. I also know that we both, we have both a parent and a staff perspective tonight to consider. So I'm also going to keep my comments short, but can answer any questions that you have at the end of listening to both the parent and the staff member. PT3 has met monthly this year, and we have one meeting left, and that's going to be on May 27. Since May of 2020, our meetings have been virtual. And our group has really broken into two groups for this past year. We have a parent education subgroup and a stakeholder communication subgroup. The parent education subgroup is constructing video vignettes for parents of students with special needs. They're creating what we're calling a What You Can Expect series, which will address the common types of IEP meetings, such as like a domain or initial or an annual review. And these videos will delve into the purposes of each meeting, the staff who will be at these meetings, and a description of the activities that will occur in these meetings. These videos are going to be posted on our Student Services webpage. Also, we have our Stakeholder Communication Group, and they are working on making alterations to our current District Student Services webpages. Additional information and material has been added, and some items will be moved around a little bit. The idea is to create these webpages so that parents can easily access information about programs, services, and procedures. And we anticipate that we will have these new webpages up over the summer. We really want to start the fall with having this information up for parents so that they can, again, easily access the information and the resources that we have within the district. I know one of the questions I usually get asked at this update is, how do I think PT3 is doing? And I think that we are actually addressing the needs of parents and moving in the right direction. The members that we have on PT3 are innovative, collaborative, and committed. And I am appreciative of the work that the members are doing. Now, we do have tonight, we have a parent representative, and that's Mrs. Ladario. I know that she was on the guest list.
Yeah, I can see her there. Oh, there we go.
So I don't know. I don't know what happened. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Jen Lada Dio, and my son Jackson goes to Washington. He's a kindergartner, and he went to Jefferson for his two years in preschool. And I have been on PT3 for two years now. And I agree with Dr. Frost. I think that the work that we're doing is really going to be helpful. I'm in the Parent Communication Committee. And I just really think it's going to be helpful, especially for parents who are new to the process. I myself am a teacher, so I do have some knowledge of IEPs and what goes on in those meetings because I sit in them myself. But I can only imagine that if I didn't have that previous knowledge, I would be terrified if I had to go into a meeting with a whole bunch of teachers and possibly administrators and not quite knowing what to expect, especially at such a young age. So like with the kids at such a young age. So I think that the work that we're doing with the slide shows, and as soon as those get up, I think Dr. Frost said by, you know, next next school year, I can only imagine how appreciative new parents who are new to the system, new to having a child who's been identified with some a learning difficulty or something else. It's going to be comforting to know that there's a place to go, especially if they can't get a hold of someone or can't talk to someone. They can just go right to the website and click on any of these slide shows that are applicable to whatever meeting they're going into or what's specifically going on with their child. So I think I think it was a great idea that we split into these two groups. I think the slide shows are a great solution to a problem that new parents might have, not knowing what to expect. So I've been pleased and we've we finished them all, if I'm not mistaken. And if we didn't finish them, they're almost done and we'll finish them at the meeting next week, current two weeks.
We did have a staff representative tonight, and that was Mrs. Joanna Fernandez. Unfortunately, she had a last minute issue come up and she was not able to come tonight. But she did provide me with a statement that I would like to read. You just have to imagine me being Joanna at this point because she wrote it from her perspective and she uses her name. So she starts off, hello, my name is Joanna Fernandez. I have been a speech pathologist at Jefferson School for the past 17 years and have been a proud community member and parent in this district for the past seven years. I have been a part of PT3 since its inception in March of 2018. Over the years, leadership in the district, in the Special Education Department, and in our PT membership, our PT membership has changed. Along with those changes, the vision and purpose of the committee has changed. At times, that has been extremely frustrating, and at times, the change has been welcomed with open arms. I am happy to report that I personally feel as if the rubber is finally meeting the road with PT3 as we are in the process of creating something that will help educate and inform parents. Specifically, we are developing short video clips that explain each step along the special education process. Families that are concerned with their child's development or are just interested in services the district provides will be able to visit our website and click on any stage in the process from initial screening for their preschooler to an older child's reevaluation. Each section will provide a brief overview of what to expect, along with contact information if further information is needed. The beauty of the PT3 committee is that you have both parents and teachers talking together. As staff members, we are able to focus on our areas of specialty and then share our thoughts with parents to ensure that our explanation of things are easily understood. The end product will be something that both new and old families of District 64 will be able to utilize for years to come. All right, sorry. Are there any questions?
Yes. A question for Mrs. Ladario. Is the PT3 group, from the parent perspective, happy with the meeting structure, their role in progressing the services in the district? And are there any resource needs that the parents think, that parents believe on PT3 that the group is missing at this time? That the district could offer?
Can you repeat the first part of the question? It was a little garbled to me. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Oh, no problem. It's on the internet here. Is the PT3, the parents on the PT3 group happy with the current meeting structure and their role in progressing student services in the district?
It seems to be. Like I said, I've only been on it for two years. So I, my son's young. He's only a kindergartner. So I didn't quite know like the history of sort of this evolution of the special education services. So I feel much like Joanna Fernandez said in the statement that Dr. Frost just read. I feel like this year, everybody's pretty happy with where we're going. It feels like we're getting something done, like there's these tangible things that we could see that we're making progress. And at our last meeting, we just, you know, we we made a plan for next year already, you know? It feels like we and we had a voice in that, you know, that of the kinds of things that we want to focus on. We actually, in my group, I said I was the in the parent communication subgroup. I don't know what the other group did, but we ranked all of the items that we think we want to focus on for next year. You know, what's the most important down to, well, if we have time, we'll get to it. And I really appreciated having that voice, and I think the other parents did as well. It's certainly staff-heavy, at least in my subcommittee. It's pretty staff-heavy. But there's four or five parents that I work with pretty regularly in that in that subcommittee. And everybody seems really happy. I know I am.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
So Dr. Go ahead. So Dr. Frost, can you, so the video vignettes, I've been to a few PT3 meetings, and these seem very interesting, as Jennifer was just talking about. Is there, is that pretty common in other districts or is this unique? Do you have a feel for that?
I think it's unique. One of the things that the Stakeholder Communication Group did in looking at developing the webpages was looking at other districts' websites. And we were not able to find something similar to that on other people's websites. But I think one of the things that COVID has taught us is the beauty of making recordings and posting them online for our staff. We actually did that when we finished our MTSS process, our multi-tiered system of support. So we actually recorded it and posted it online. So again, people can go back and look at that at any time. And I've had parents who have called me and have asked, you know, what is this process? And so I have referred them back to the video. And I have also referred them to the guidance document that we have online as well. So I do think that there is great value. You know, if you want to talk about something positive that has happened during the pandemic, I think we've learned some great things about, you know, how we can make some, create some document, create some videos for parents that they can view at any point. I know that too with when we were talking about the SLC program last year, we did it as a video and it was a little bit lengthy, 27 minutes. And I know that people were a little bit concerned with the amount of time that was. And so I think that was one of the things that kind of played into making sure that these were short vignettes for parents so that it wasn't going to take a lot of time, but it gave them some good background information.
Other questions? So Dr. Frost, do you want to give us a foreshadowing of the next directions for PT3?
Well, actually, what we'll do is, you know, after our May session, hopefully we'll wrap up everything and then get things posted online over the summer. And then when we start back up in September, what we'll do is we'll present then to PT3 different ideas. And again, let them make the choice of which activities they want to participate in. Now that we have a strategic plan, there are some things that they need to consider as part of the strategic plan too, as maybe things that they would want to work on. So we'll have that discussion when we have our new membership or even some of our staff and parents who will remain with us for next year, moving forward in in the fall to make those decisions of what what we will actually work on for next year.
Now that you're kind of pausing before the next school year starts, is there anything you're doing for the new students who are registering or the incoming students? Or anything to help make them aware about what you're doing?
Um, I mean, we can certainly send out information once the new information is posted. One of the things that we do at the beginning of each year is I do send out a letter to all parents of students who have IEPs, directing them to information that is on our website, but also highlighting who our coordinators are, how, what their contact information is and so forth. So, you know, definitely, we do that every year. If you would like me to highlight that a little bit more this coming year, we can certainly do that.
And then I just had a question for Ms. Ladario. So you've been on PT3 for, did you say a couple of years, two years? So have you talked at all about the the sped audit or anything, any of these prior documents that were created?
We did. We spent a lot of time last year focusing on that. And that that's sort of what I was referencing when I said I didn't quite know the history of it. Like I didn't live in Park Ridge nor I didn't have a, you know, a school-aged child in Park Ridge when all of that was going on. So when I came on to the committee last year, if I'm remembering correctly, that was the first thing that we combed through was the audits and sort of tried to figure out like, where did we want to troubleshoot from the findings of that audit? Or audits, I think, that we looked at. So yes, we spent some significant time on that last year.
And then this question's for Dr. Frost. I know your agendas for the PT3 meetings, they're very, you know, specific, and you have a lot to accomplish. But is there any, is there ever any time for, you know, parents just to talk about issues? I mean, I'm still hearing from parents about the same issues. I know there's some disgruntled ones still. There are a lot who, you know, or there are some who left PT3. There are some who, I don't want to say have given up, but I mean, I guess that's how they would say they've given up on the district or their students are at Main South now. So I'm just, you know, letting you know that I'm still hearing these these rumblings. So maybe if there, you know, might be helpful for them to have some type of unstructured time. I know there's a little bit, you know, but I know you have a lot to accomplish at these PT3 meetings. But if there's just something
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I always want to say there's two sides to every story. So I'm not aware of anybody who is disgruntled, who hasn't already talked to Dr. Frost or myself. I will say that some parents often want PT3 to be about their child and their disability, and they don't want to talk about anything else. And so I think that part of the structure of PT3 is so that we don't do that and that we're working on topics that all parents and all staff can have access to. And I think that some of the older members wanted to control everything that was being said and everything that was being done. And so we had to work very hard on PT3 to get to a good point with structure. And Dr. Frost and I often hear from multiple members of PT3, kind of just how it was tonight, of how much better it is because we're not getting bogged down into, you know, those types of debates and those types of discussion. I also just want to question a little bit, is it the school's purpose to just provide a room where parents go in and just talk? You know, that should that really be something the district is doing? And I think that could be something that, you know, we could talk through further. But I think that hasn't been the point of PT3, which is why we haven't done that so far.
If I can just add, Leanne, when you say you post stuff, I know you guys do, do you do it on the district site only, or does it go to the principals for then, the principals to share with new kindergarten or families from, maybe who aren't from around here?
Yeah, it, it's, there's a variety. Sometimes it goes out in the Friday newsletter from the district as well. So depending upon, you know, what is happening. Student Services was very involved when we started with COVID as far as promoting or finding resources for parents. And so we had dedicated a webpage for that. And that went into the, the Friday. I think it also went into the, the principals newsletters as well. So we, we use all different types of ways to communicate in order to get the, the information out.
Okay. Just wondering, because I think some people, I know for field, they don't always read the district stuff. They only read the principal or vice versa. It's making sure it's out there everywhere.
Thanks.
And then following up on Phil's comment, are you able to track the metrics then of when these videos are posted and viewed as to their utilization?
I think that they can be, where's MJ? Yeah. Because we were able to actually track when we posted the SLC one. So we knew how many hits it had gotten. And even MJ had it down to what was the average viewing time. So.
All right. Anything else on PT3? And as was mentioned, there's one more PT3 meeting this year, and then they'll start again in the fall. And we have had board member, a board member can attend as an observer role each meeting. So you can see the workings of this committee. And so I imagine we'll continue to do that in the start of the fall. All right. All right. Thanks for your hard work. It's exciting to, that there's an accomplishment. As you were saying, Jennifer, something tangible. So I think that's great for PT3 and it'll be great for the community. I think to see those when they get released on the web.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Okay. Thanks for coming. All right. All right. We're continuing on, on our agenda. And we're going to discuss the five-year master facility plan. And just to put this in context, this will not be our only discussion on facilities. You know, we are certainly, Luann is like, no, you know, we are certainly going to look at coming up our full day kindergarten, what that's going to look like and enrollment. So this is going to be an ongoing discussion. So we don't need to have all the questions answered tonight. So we want to then just take it in, but we will have more opportunities to take those in. So I'm going to turn it over to Luann and Jason and our architects from Studio GC.
Thank you, Denise. I think Eric, you were going to say a few words first?
I was, but they were the same thing Denise said, so I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start off tonight, Denise, and then I'm going to turn it over to Rick and his team to walk you guys through how, kind of the development of the plan and how it was put together. So I kind of wanted to start off with just a little historical information. It's hard to believe that we finished our first five years and heading into the next five years. It seems like we were just sitting at the table, talking about secure vestibules and kind of the last one standing on the board is Tom Sodos. He was on the board at that time, so he knows what those meetings were like. Our mantra during the first five years was really safe, warm and dry to get our buildings to a position where they were safe for our students and staff, warm and dry, which meant working on our roofs and the structure of the buildings. Over that timeframe, we completed approximately $35 million in capital projects over the summers between 2016 and 2020. In addition, this summer, we'll also be completing the HVAC at Carpenter School and other repair work being done in that building. So we'll be pretty close to 37 million at that time when you start implementation of the next five-year plan. Included in the projects that we did for our safe was the secure vestibules in all our elementary buildings and at Lincoln Middle School. The process included creating administrative offices in all schools so that they can work more efficiently and provide much-needed meeting spaces within these buildings. The secure vestibule portion of the project was approximately $100,000 per building with the remainder of the funds being used for other construction needs within the office and the general area. At this time, Jefferson, as we know, requires a lot of work, including a secure vestibule. And Emerson's office is somewhat secure, but we need to do additional work going forward to make it as secure as the other schools in the district. Meaning that currently you can leave the Emerson office and exit out into the school where in our other facilities, it's completely locked. So you need to actually buzz out into the school. During this time period, we also did many maintenance projects that were paid out of our operations and maintenance budget. These included seal coating of our parking lots, tuck pointing of our buildings. We're now doing roof evaluations every six months and repair work as needed on our roofs. Mulching our playgrounds to the required 12-inch depth and interior painting, along with many other projects that the maintenance team in our building do on their own within our facilities. So tonight, we're looking at the new plan and Studio GC has combed our buildings. And as you saw from the very detailed draft report that the board received with all the details, it is a lot of details. So I mean, this is right down to the door, the lock, everything. So this is really, I like to call it, it's really a work in progress for the next five years. Because the administration and the board will be working together each year to, well, first to look at the plan and identify that this is the project you want to move forward with over the next five years. Then your next phase will be developing, how are we going to pay for these projects? So it'll be developing a new financial framework, much like we had for the last five years. Then on a year-to-year basis, you'll be looking at recommendations that administration brings forward for work to be completed that summer. Remembering that would, in conjunction with other projects that are potentially coming up, such as full-day kindergarten projects and required work to be done at Jefferson School. And what will be done with the ESC building, which is also in need of a great deal of repair? Is it going to be repaired or relocated to a different location within the school district? So right now, we're sitting at it on our total sheet. We're coming in very close. We're at about 32 million. Then this includes our red projects. And I'm going to let Amy Pazinski from Studio GC explain the red, blue, and then kind of the gray projects we have. When we first met to kind of go over this, it was a little overwhelming. And so we, you know, re-looked at it and said, let's identify these more based on, you know, red being ones that the highly recommended, that these are completed within the next five years. The blue, many of those would be done through our O and M budgets, such as seal coating, parking lots and things like that. And then the gray are ones for, you know, items reaching their end of useful life. We don't have to replace them, but it is at the end of its useful life. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to Rick Patricic, who is our lead architect with Studio GC. He has Amy Pazinski. Hopefully I got that correct with him. One of our architects, Marissa Urbina, who is another architect with Studio GC. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Rick. Hopefully they're there.
I'm here. And I was the one that was going to present, so I'll just go ahead and start presenting. I'm going to share my screen if that's possible. I have a short little PowerPoint to go through. Okay. So you all received the packet, which you noticed it was, it was very large. And as Luann noted, it was myself and two others from Studio GC as part of the architect team, as well as a group of engineers that we had probably for the past year now, evaluating all of your current building conditions and the life expectancy of various components within your facilities. All the equipment and materials and assemblies and all that. They, they, the, the price was not included as their nominal cost, so it's not a comprehensive list, but it does identify major expenses that you're likely to incur. And based off of conversations with the administration, it was requested that we focus on the next five years particular, specifically. So it, it is a reminder that this is a working document that we use and we will reference periodically during all future construction projects within the district. And items are expected to shift up and down and in and out of the five years. So then it's, it's not expected that whatever it shows in 2022 is to be done and completed in 2022. So just to go over again, Luann kind of went over this a little bit, but all of the items are based off of a red, blue and gray color scheme. And the red items were prioritized during discussions with them. It was to piggyback off of the HLS and the safe, dry, warm. So these remaining safety items include any MEP updates.
Amy, can you explain just real briefly what the HLS is? Because we have new board members.
Sure. So the HLS is a, it's, it stands for health, life, safety. So every, every five years, every five to 10 years, we architects kind of program specific priorities within the buildings that need to be improved upon to improve the health, life and safety of, of the students using your buildings. So those safety improvements include your fire alarm devices, your intercom system, updating all of the schools to all of the so far secure vestibules that we've put in. Emerson and Jefferson are the, the two schools remaining that don't have the all-district intercom. So in case if you were to need to do a, a district-wide lockdown, that intercom system would all be linked together. And as noted, any MEP updates, that's mechanical, electrical and plumbing. And then new classroom doors with compliant safety latching for quick lockdown as well in case it have been emergency. And then it was also brought that elementary schools have rubber flooring in their gyms that have mercury and asbestos below them. And so in a few, in Field and Washington that we just completed last summer in the NPR rooms, we've been installing a rolled flooring material that is multi, well, not multi-purpose, but it, it works in gyms, in multi-purpose rooms, lunch, lunchrooms and, and such like that. The blue items were the maintenance items, which are yearly items that you guys should folk, not focus on, but pay attention to, which included the mulching of the playgrounds, seal coating, which is recommended to do every two to three years to keep the maintenance of the asphalt. Painting in your corridors and your classrooms, and then tuck pointing of all of your brickwork on your buildings. And then the gray were recommended items that were just based off of their lifespan and life expectancy. Again, not required, but just a recommendation. And then the first page of the whole packet was this overall chart, which broke down each school's red and blue item grand totals by year and graphed them at the bottom. So you could see that each item on the further pages then were broken down, but we thought it, it'd be nice to show a comprehensive page to kind of include, so you didn't have to add up all the red items all at once. So that's what this page was for. And then each school had two or three pages of all of these items then broken down. So you could see in 2022 and 2023, what those red items were. And again, it included just the red as the priority, high priority, blue, highly recommended. And then the gray, as you could see, were casework, lighting fixtures, ceilings. We tried to combine them, that if we were going to replace a ceiling, that's also a good time to go ahead and replace the lights. So that's how we kind of linked those up together, as well as classroom doors. I think most of them were prioritized to be in 2022, just because if you're going to replace doors in one school, you might as well just do a full district project and replace all the classroom doors at all of the schools. Again, doesn't need to happen that way, but that's kind of how, how we itemize them line by line. And then some of the schools like Lincoln and Roosevelt, their asphalt paving, they had site renov, or site restoration projects already in the, in the works. So that would be for next year as well, which would include repaving and site drainage that is in desperate need. And then the bulk of the facility audit were these data charts, which broke things out item by item and broke it up into where they were located at the school, starting with site and then exterior enclosure. And then your interior components, like your doors, your partition types, your interior components, your ceilings, floors, accessories, and then your mechanical, electrical and plumbing components. So I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but it basically reads left to right. And so again, it's where it was in, at the school, so on the site, what it is, is the component. The detail of it, just basically trying to break it down even more. The task, most of it was to, to replace. But like for the asphalt paving and all that, it's just to resurface or seal coat where it was located in the building. Install date. So the, the district has really good documentation of when projects have been completed. We know what we've completed in the past five years. So these dates are fairly accurate as far as, as we're concerned. And then just going off of service life of what we know, these items, how long they are to last. And based off of that, the Excel document automatically bases its anticipated replacement date. Everything was evaluated in 2021. And then we went ahead and did a life expectancy modifier on it, which meant we evaluated each item based off of its current condition. So if you looked at most of the items, the first one was asphalt and seal coating. It's recommended to do that every two to three years. The last time the district did that was in 2018. So it was, it was expected to be replaced this past summer. It didn't. So what we did is we put a one-year life expectancy modifier on it, which meant that it got budgeted for the 2022 school year. Then it goes into detail of the quantity. It's usually off of a square footage, but the unit just depends on the item individually per cost. And then that gave you its estimated replacement cost. And then each, each breakout site element, exterior enclosure and all that was, as you could see, was in the green total for each school. And then the last slide I have is just showing all of the graphs. These graphs were on your cover pages of each school. And again, it just shows a year-by-year grand total of all of the tasks, the red, the blue and the gray. So.
Thank you, Amy. Rick is actually having microphone problems. But since Amy was one of the major people working on this project, that was great for her to be able to do the presentation. Eric, do you want to make any comments? Or can we ask question, if there's questions right now? Or what would you, how would you like to move forward right now?
Yes, we, we can certainly turn it back to Denise. And if we want to do questions now, we can. I just want to remind the board, you know, you're not approving all these projects tonight. You're just seeing what they are so that you have context of what some of the things are that are coming down the road. If at one point in this plan, we need to go build something, we need to come to the board and we need to go out to bid and there needs to be an approval process. And all of those pieces still are in place. This is to kind of give a roadmap so that you can kind of see where we're heading. But in light of that, Denise, are we ready for questions?
Sure. Let's open it up to comments, questions, keep in that context in mind.
I have a question.
Um, I have a question about, uh, and the plan on a fair amount of the schools, we were replacing the vestibule doors, but I, I was under the impression those were sort of new. Is there like a new model or did I miss to understand something? Or what, what's the story with the replacement of those doors?
Yeah. So what we call a vestibule, so we replace the secure vestibule, the main entrance doors. Um, but what we consider a vestibule is any, any entrance that has double door, double doors as in like two leaves, but also a second door entrance. Uh, that, that's what we call a vestibule. Um, so again, those kind of go into our talks that we've had uh, with Luann and, and uh, Jason. And they had prioritized some that are dented or starting to rust. And those were a priority item for them to kind of get those fixed and updated with new hardware.
I got it. So a lot of those are interior, not the main vestibule.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, one thing I wanted to point out on the gym floors, um, the product that we would be using uh, at the elementaries and I'm not positive about Emerson, I may misspeak. Um, typically in elementary buildings, we do put in more of that type of product into your gyms. Uh, wood floors are very expensive with a high maintenance. And typically those are reserved for high schools. And if you're lucky, you have them in your middle schools. And I know for sure we have them at Lincoln and I'm pretty sure at Emerson, but I'm not positive. We do. Yes, Jason's shaking his head. Yes. So it's the, what we're recommending for a product is uh, very commonly used in elementary schools. We're also looking at a product, uh, because my concern is the lunch tables also uh, that we have to put down onto them, that the uh, product will come back to its original shape. You know, with the lunch tables being put down, uh, the floors that are in the gyms now are way beyond their useful life.
All right. How about other questions, comments?
So Denise, I guess I can kind of start next steps and then Eric will fill in because I'll be.
I think you have a question. Let's, let's go with that first.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit more of a comment. Um, um, and really, you know, the way it was presented um, was broken down into very granular detail by school. Um, and it kind of lacked that kind of aggregate view. And I asked for some numbers, um, you know, because i- if there's a really a need, it shouldn't matter where, which school it's in, we should, we could do it. Um, so I asked for more of a, if by category, uh, which was provided to me. So interior classroom doors is, it totals 1.2 million. Exterior priority doors total 1 million. Exterior doors, another 900,000, close to room signage is nearly a half a million dollars. Um, you know, windows is, is, is over 3 million, nearly close to 3.2 million. Sinks is 600,000, uh, toilet, uh, urinals adds up to about close to 400,000. Hands-free faucets uh, adds up to close to 320,000. Asphalt pavement adds up to 740,000. Casework, uh, cabinetry adds up to 6.75 million. And temperature controls add up to one, nearly 1.4 million. And I think what I'm missing um, from the, you know, while there was the needed, was explained a little bit more. What I'd really like to understand more to approve it is, is why is it a need and not a want for each of those categories? And what, you know, are we only replacing those things that are truly needed? Or are you grouping it together for some other reason with, you know, you know, maybe a panel has gone on a few doors, but you, you, you using the opportunity to get all, all new doors? I'd like to understand a little bit more of that at the next level, um, when, when we get to the stage of, of approving this.
That's understood. So typically when we would do these projects, because the, kind of the way we laid it out, Gareth, is typically how you would see it, you know, as a, your whole district and then laying it out by individual buildings. But when we go to do like the door replacements or lock replacements, typically you look at doing, um, hopefully, if you have the funding, all of the building, all of your buildings, right? So uh, the plan would be is if you're replacing your interior doors and your lock sets, that that would be one bid that would go out for the entire district or some large portion of the district at one time. Um, so as you look each year, um, you know, because each early spring or late winter, this will be brought to the board with what the projects are that the administration is considering for that summer. And so then each, on a yearly basis, you'll be able to see. So this, you know, next summer, maybe they'll recommend doing all the interior doors and the hardware. Um, so it really, it really is going to be grouped together. I mean, because right, you get a better price too, and we're doing more than one building at a time.
Yeah, I think what I'm, I'm, I'm want though is to, from, from a board level, as a board member, is, is that bigger picture of, of why do we need to replace these number of doors? And it's going to drive this much cost. Um, you know, that I think in all, over five years, this adds up to $35 million. And I think the, the district, as you mentioned just earlier, uh, just spent $35 million over the last five years. So, you know, it just seems eerily close. And I'd like to understand if there's potential here to, to reduce the cost to taxpayers um, over the next five years.
Correct. Yeah, we wouldn't be asking to just replace doors, to replace doors. Um, one of the other things about the lock hardware is uh, for a security and safety reasons. We have some teachers at Lincoln that have to carry around, you know, quite a few keys. And now if you call a lockdown, they're, I mean, to step out of the class, figure out which key it is, lock the door and, you know, pull the classroom door shut. So some of this is also for safety and security reasons. So I know Eric was going to say something.
Yeah. So I also wanted to add, you know, the items on this list, I'm not even recommending that you approve them, and that's why we're not doing that tonight. I think Studio GC's job is to make sure we're prepared with all the recommendations of if you keep letting this roof go, you're going to be in danger of this happening. But that doesn't mean we need to take all their suggestions. Um, I can see there's items on this list already that I wouldn't say yes to. Um, but that's what allows the board then to get very focused when we're going to do one of these where, you know, we need to bring, and then you get to hear, why is this important? Why is this needed now? And then we go into that level of detail at that time.
That's helpful, Eric. And I, I, I'd just like to add though, I, you know, the objective standards on the blue and the gray, i- i- it was very, you know, maintenance is important. You don't want to end up with a leaky roof. That's those, they're very objective and focused. I think it was more on the red items and getting more detail when you think about it across all the schools in the district. You know, why, why, why is that, that item important? That will be very helpful, I think, in future, future meetings when you bring it to the board.
And one of the other things on our doors is most of them are not ADA compliant. So that would bring up.
Yeah, I don't want to get too deep into one particular item. Um, so, um, but yes, I, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, on a yearly basis, you'll, you'll, as Eric said, you're not going to approve this survey. But on a yearly basis, when you're looking at the projects, they're going to go into much more detail on the projects that they're recommending for that year and why.
I think you're on mute, Denise.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Eric. Uh, other questions, comments?
So we are going to see it when we go out to bid and, you know, we vote on those motions. But are, there are some that are just smaller amounts. Are those the ones that we just won't see as a board? And those are the ones that, you know, Eric will say yes or no to. Let's say it is something for like $6,000 and stuff like that. So is that, um, how are we going to continue, right?
That typically, um, for something like that, uh, well, like our roof inspections and repairs, right? That's, was typically something that Ron or a person in Jason's position would come to me. We discuss it, um, and then decide, you know, kind of look at different companies, that who best would be able to do that. And sometimes it's not even the same company for all of the roofs. Uh, so small things like that are not brought to the board, but much larger uh, sized projects are then brought to the board uh, for, you know, the approval to go out to bid. Because when you go out to bid, you're starting to spend money, right?
I think we, at one of the, it was probably at a policy committee meeting. I think we briefly did talk about those things, like all the micro purchases that are below that threshold and that we don't see and that it is a positive thing to, you know, use more than one company and spread it around.
That is correct.
All right. That was a good point, Carol. Um, anything else on this? I know there's a lot of information. Anything else? All right. All right. So we will continue to look at this and have this conversation throughout the summer within the context of kindergarten enrollment. So this is not the only time, but you get to digest it once and then we'll revisit it in the upcoming meetings. All right. Thank you, Studio GC. Thank you, Liam. Thank you, Jason. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Let us move on to um, more of an internal work. Uh, we're going to discuss two policies. And I want first Tony to kind of just help us understand for the former board members and our new board members, when something is in a discussion item and then when something's an action item and kind of, you know, moving things from discussion to action. So if you can introduce that for us, Tony.
Uh, yeah, uh, depending on the topic, obviously there's, there's some major topics, there's minor topics. Um, usually best practice and, and board policy, you actually have a board policy that addresses development. And we'll talk about that. But often, um, there could be a meeting, um, where on the agenda, it's posted as a discussion item. Um, and you can add a discussion item to a regular meeting agenda at any time. Even if it's not on, we could, if the board felt they needed to discuss something, they could. Um, but when the board's going to act, when it's an actual substantive action item, you're buying something, you're amending something, you're approving something, um, that item must be on the agenda 48 hours in advance. So a lot of times what happens is a topic comes up. Um, the board decides how much time they need to discuss it, maybe one or two meetings. Some topics go many meetings. I, I, the secure vestibules or, or security officers. Those topics went many, many, many meetings. Um, and then at some point, when the board is ready, has all the information, they're comfortable and usually with the recommendation of the administration, um, depending on the topic, uh, it moves to an action item. Um, which then again, like I said, is posted 48 hours in advance at least. And then the board can act on that item that night. And you can never act on an item that is not on the agenda. Um, so tonight, um, you're looking at board policies. Um, now your district has a board policy committee um, that meets regularly and works on updating and revising board policies. And then you do have a board policy about board policy development. And in that board policy, it says that um, a, a board policy that's going to be revised or amended substantively should at least be read one first reading to the board. Um, and then come back, that's discussion, and then come back a second time for a second reading. And then usually there's uh, an approval at that point. Um, and then a lot of the, the nitty gritty work with your board policy though, like I said, is at the policy committee. Um, and then when it gets into a place where it's ready to come to the board, that's where it comes. Um, and the policies that you're talking about tonight have, have been, I believe at the committee, they've been before the board before. And it sounds like, um, now the board's getting set or ready to consider whether or not they want to amend those policies again.
Okay. All right. How about some questions on that general information before we go into our specific policies?
I have a question, a few questions with Tony. Um, just to, to be clear. Um, does the Illinois Open Meeting Act, doesn't it allow um, the board to take final action if it is germane to the item on the agenda?
As long as it's posted 48 hours in advance and it, for action. Yeah. So actually you'll see in a lot of agendas, yeah, it says action item.
In, in, in Illinois Open Meeting Act?
In the Illinois Opens Meeting Act, um, there's discussion, I, I'd have to look, but there's discussion items and action items. Um, and the board cannot vote on any item um, that isn't, hasn't been posted on 48 hours in advance. But again, discussion items can be added at any time, including during the meeting.
When you say, when you say can't vo- vote on anything that hasn't been posted, I think the question that Gareth is asking, does the fact that it's being voted on have to be posted? Or does, can we, if, if, if it's like Gareth said, if the, if someone asks to vote on it and it's germane to something that was already on the agenda 48 hours in advance, can we advance a vote that day?
It depends what the agenda says. The agenda needs to be clear about what the board is doing that night. Um, it can't just name a topic and not notify the public what they're doing. Because then you could have boards that would post something very generically and the public would not know clearly that the board was going to take action that night. So it comes from attorney general opinions about how you have to specify on the agenda so that the public knows what is going to happen that night. Because otherwise you would have boards that would put stuff on there and it would not be clear that you're going to take action that night. And people may not show up for the meeting, may not speak about it at the meeting. Um, so the attorney general has said you need to be adequately specific on the agenda so that the board, the, the public knows what is going to transpire that night.
Tony, a question about.
Those were the interpretation of, sorry, the interpretation of OMA from the AG is where that comes from. But go ahead. Sorry.
No, you're okay. Um, Tony, when you said that something needs to be brought before the board, um, like a policy specifically, um, at least one time. Um, I believe you said it was two iterations of the policy to be brought before the board. Does that mean the currently seated board or the board as a whole across different time points?
Um, the board is the board. Um, so if you did have, let's say, a first reading of one policy with the old board, um, yes, you could move to the second reading. But now the new board could say, we're not ready for that. Um, we, we do want to, and this, by the way, is not OMA, this is best practice from IASB, of course, board policy development, and you guys have adopted their policy on that. There are exceptions too, to that rule. Um, when we're, when we're correcting a footnote or something very minor, um, that is an exception to have to bring the board to it twice. Again, you can read the policy on it. Um, or if there's some kind of special or urgent circumstance, something that must be at policy, new law comes out, um, and it's in place right away and your policy is in violation of that law. Um, that's a special circumstance where under your policy, then it could be amended or adopted differently on that first time it was presented to the board. And then, um, I'll note at the end of the board policy development, uh, policy, um, at the very end, it does say that also the majority of the board can suspend that policy temporarily and move forward um, on an item uh, if they want to upon the first reading for your board policy. Yeah. So this is all, if you go to your board policy manual, the 200 section, the, the two, I, I would encourage you all to look at, especially the ones that are about board meeting organization. Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, board writer procedure, board policy development. They're very, you can answer almost 90% of your questions about how these meetings should act and how you guys can do business from your board policies.
Tony, uh, just a follow-up. Under, under the board policy into two colon 220, it does say that items submitted by board members to the superintendent or president shall be placed on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. You know, I personally emailed president and superintendent last Friday with a motion that I wished to be added uh, on this topic to the agenda and it wasn't added. What recourse does a board member have if, if the policy isn't being followed?
Well, ju- it, that board policy is that obviously so board members could have input on the agenda. It doesn't dictate that it has to be the next board meeting. It dictates that it will be placed on an agenda at a future board meeting. You can see there's no timeframe in the email. So usually you do have to organize your agendas so that they are manageable um, for an evening. And your agendas are being worked on already a month in advance. Usually there's a tentative agenda that's presented at this board meeting for your next board meeting. So that usually is delegated to the board president and the superintendent to manage how many items would be on an agenda and whether it's ready for action or not. But a board member, you're right, under that policy can request an item be placed on there. And at some future board meeting, it should be placed on, on the.
Wait, are you, are you saying a board member doesn't have the right to request something to be put on the, the meeting immediately the following week? I've been on this board for eight years and the precedent and our board has been that if a president is asked to put something on the very next agenda, they either go ahead and do it, or they at the very minimum, go back and ask other board members, do you want to see this on the next uh, agenda? So are you saying, are you saying that we don't have the right as a board member to insist on something being on the very next board meeting agenda?
I am telling you what your board policy says. So if you read your board policy, it says any board member can ask for an item to be on the agenda and it shall. It does not give a timeframe. Now, how you guys have operated in your district, that may be how you've operated and that's fine. I'm not saying you can't do that. Um, I was just telling you what your board policy says.
So our board policy needs to change because it's too vague is what you're saying.
Yeah, no, but here.
It just says it shall.
Yeah, Tom, you gotta take the other side of it.
Which means we can put it whenever we want.
Okay, Tom, I'm just going to take the other side of it. And I'm not saying anyone would do it, but I do have certain boards where it would. You could have a board member. You could have a board member call and say, I want 40 items put on the agenda. And here they all are, and they're very big items. And if you had a rule that said those have to go on the agenda, then your next board meeting, you guys are showing up, and you're going over 40 items, and you could be here for nine to 10 hours. So it's more of a making sure that you have a manageable agenda.
So then what is, what is in place in our policy that protects the board member who is not ridiculous in asking in 40 items? Who is asking in one item to be put on a agenda, on a, on a board meeting agenda that is not overloaded to begin with? What is in our policy to protect against that? Because then now you're, now basically, who's making the final decision? Who makes the final decision on, on what goes on an agenda? Would it be the board president at that point that decides what goes on an agenda or not? And if that's the case, then one, one person on our board can derail a issue for four weeks by saying, no, I'm going to put it on four weeks from now, because the policy says we can, I can, all I got to do is just make sure it gets on one. Or for four months, for that matter.
You'd have to look at the policy that designates the board president's duties. And I believe under the board president's duties, that one of the duties, if you have the press policy, and I have to look, is that they help set the agenda for the next meeting.
Helping in setting the agenda and having the final word on what's on the agenda. It seems to me that our board policy on, on this specific issue seems to be so vague that there is no real determination. It basically leaves somebody with the ability to unilaterally decide how and what goes on an agenda and when. Because if you're telling me that our board policy is written in a way where it says, and it shall be placed on, on a, on a agenda, but it's not specific onto what agenda, that, who then decides where it goes and at what time?
And most, in most districts, it's the superintendent and board president, but obviously, if a board member doesn't think it's timely enough, they bring it up at the next board meeting, they talk, and if a majority of the board wants it to be moved up, they can do that. But we've, I don't think we've had that problem here. But in this case, he asked, and the superintendent should note it, and it should be placed on a future board meeting at some point, because your board policy does say shall. But if you do want to revisit your board policies, then there's a development policy, and you should follow your policy and bring it back to the board committee to revisit that issue.
If I can just interrupt, Garrett, I think your request was to vote on the policy, correct?
My request was, was wording of a motion, and I mentioned this exact board policy in order for the item to be placed on the agenda with the motion.
Right, because according to a board policy development policy, we have to have a discussion first. I think that's where the confusion, confusion came.
No, we can still have a discussion and then the vote on the same day. Where he wasn't, I don't, I don't think Gareth was asking to vote without a discussion. I think Gareth was asking, let's have a vote the day we discuss it.
Well, I think because of our policy, we couldn't do that, if Tony can confirm.
Before that, I, I did ask, I did request as a, as a policy committee member, a policy committee meeting as well. I had requested that on the Monday, but was told that, that it wasn't, that wasn't enough time, or, or despite, we checking with Phyllis for availability that week.
And can I get a clarification, Tony? There's nothing in our policy that says we cannot vote on something on the same day we discuss it, as long as it was placed on the agenda for that meeting.
You have a, you have a board policy regarding board files, policy development. And that policy reads that a policy will first be brought for a first reading before it's acted on, and then a second reading when it will be acted on, subject to two exceptions, which I already cited, which one is a special circumstance or urgent circumstance, or if it's a non-substantive change. You know how, you know, Tom, those footnotes always change in the policies, and we just move through. But again, as I, as I also stated earlier, you go to the bottom of that policy, and it does say that a majority of the board can take a vote to temporarily set aside the policy, and that's a procedural vote. That's not something that needs to be on the agenda in advance. That's just a procedural move like Robert's Rules of Order. So if you guys did have an item that was properly posted for action, and it was a board policy, subject to that board policy, all you'd have to do first is take a vote to waive that policy temporarily, and then you would move and you'd, you'd take action after that. So there is a way to do it.
So we could do that today?
No, because it was not posted for action. You can't violate the Open Meetings Act.
So, you know, when I want to give, and you know, Tom, I just heard some feedback there, I just want to give a response on why it wasn't posted as an action item in Dr. Olson and I's discussion, and Gareth is right in what he said when he emailed, um, Dr. Olson and I about the policy meeting, and when he emailed about adding an item to the policy. And so, as you said, Tom, I reached out to board members and said, do you want this added as an action item? And I got mixed responses and flip flop responses from individuals saying, first, I never want to vote on a policy the same day it's discussed. And then a few hours later, yeah, I guess we can vote, and I've got, I've received responses of, maybe we should wait for the new board members. Well, I guess we can vote. So we, I, I wasn't getting confirmation from enough board members saying that this should be an action item. So that is why it was not an action item. If I would have done a majority, I know Gareth feels strongly about this, you know, we've had several conversations saying this should be an action item, then of course, I need to, I would respect the board and put that.
So you didn't, so you did not get, you did not get four people to tell you that they're, they are okay with this being voted on tonight? Is that what you're saying right now? You did not get four people to say that they were ready to vote on it tonight?
I'm saying there were flip flop responses.
At the end, at the, regardless of the flip or the flop, at the end, the last statement to you, did you not get four people that said that they would be willing to vote on this tonight?
Not directly, no.
For what it's worth, I myself wanted to review what was going on before I just, at the very first meeting, put a vote in. So I'm not, I wouldn't say I'm throwing this under Denise on her at all. I would like to see, as a new member, I want to see what's going on, read it thoroughly again, and then make a educated decision on it, not just come into my very first board meeting and because all the other board members are on board, make a decision. So I was one of the ones that said I would rather wait.
I could respect that. I'm just wondering if she had four people that, that asked for it, or that eventually said, yes, we would like it.
And I think I responded not directly, Tom.
To me, it's all a policy. I, I've, I said that I would be okay with it.
But Tom, can you share what you said initially?
My, yes.
So can you just share for the board?
Yeah, yeah, if you'd like, I could actually post it, because I corrected myself. I wrote, I wrote you, I wrote you a text message saying, I'm sorry, I thought you were discussing another topic when you asked me this question, if I was, and I thought we were, you were asked, because you first asked me a question about facilities. And then you immediately thereafter asked me a question about how I felt about voting. I misunderstood, and I clarified it to you. I said, I misunderstood, I thought you were asking me if I wanted to vote on facilities today, which I think is a much larger discussion and requires the new board member some time to understand and figure out. And I clarified that to you, and I said, when it comes to discussing this, a policy issue of this nature, I have no problem doing it tonight. And that's exactly, that's exactly how our communication went. So the last communication I had with you clarified my first response to you and made it clear that I was ready to go now. So I'm just wondering how many more, since Gareth asked for it, I told you I was ready for it. If you had two other people that told you they were ready for it, I want to know if you chose unilaterally to ignore that, or if you did not have four. So I'm asking you clearly right now, did you have four people with their last statement to you saying that they were comfortable voting on it today?
And I said clearly, I thought I did, I'll reiterate it, I did not have directly four people that said yes, directly to me.
What do you mean by direct, what do you mean by directly?
So I have, I, I, go ahead, Nikki.
Nikki, I think you've been waiting to talk.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Tom, I seconded kind of what Phyllis said. As a new board member, I would appreciate seeing a policy and having time to read it and the proposed changes before I vote on something. So I am not in favor of voting on this tonight because I need more time.
Okay, that, I mean, I could, I could appreciate that as well. I just, I just wanted, would like to know if there were four people.
Go ahead, Rebecca, you were going to say something.
Yes, so I had said I'm fine with, I mean, Carol and I have been at this policy for a year, so I tried to know where I stand on this policy. But initially, I said I'd be fine with voting, and then when I found out that the new board members, or two of the new board members weren't comfortable yet, I said, now let's defer to them to give them some more time. We already had a huge facilities agenda, and our next meeting is June 3rd. It's not, it's not really far away, so.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I got, I got my answer clear.
Right now, tonight.
No, no, I, I, my argument isn't whether it should or shouldn't. I was more concerned about whether we were all polled and whether the poll, the, the decision was made based on the poll, and I got my answer. Denise did what the, what the majority of the board requested. She had four members that said that they would rather defer till June and not do it tonight, so she did it proper. That's it. I mean, that's all I was trying to get at. Whether, I learned a long, long time ago, as a board member, you're not going to win every, every vote. And if you think you're going to win every vote, it's going to be a long four years. As long as the process was done and done properly, I am very satisfied with waiting and deciding to do this at another time.
The problem is, there's not, the problem is, is that if, if the board felt that way, the will of the board should have been through a table, a motion to table, the motion, rather than not having the motion at all. And I think that's the, the key problem here, is to be transparent and accountable to the public. This should have been done in this session, and we should have just motioned to table. And then that way, the board could have actively discussed the motion and the wording, and then we would have had a motion to table, and it would have put it to the next board meeting. And I think that's the problem here, and I think as a board collectively, how we work together should be in the public's interest, and, and, and we should be having those discussions about whether we're not ready to vote on something in the public.
Well, certainly, Gareth, if we did it that way, if we did it that way, we could have avoided the last five minutes of having to, we, we, we kind of just did what you said, but in a very roundabout way. If we would have done it your way, then yes, we would have gotten to the same answer, and it would have been tabled to the fifth anyway.
So I, Rebecca and I were on the policy committee for the past two years, now we're not, and I think we've discussed this at, you know, various policy committee meetings and at all the board meetings. So yes, the both of us are ready to vote. Tony pointed out the issue about introducing it first and then voting. So I think the issue is whether the policy could have been introduced today, and then we would have voted next time. So now I think part of the issue is that now we're, I don't, wouldn't say that we're starting behind now, but that we could have at least introduced it without a vote. But then, as you guys pointed out, this policy two colon 220 doesn't specify which, which agenda, which meeting agenda it has to be added to. It seemed, you know, it almost seems, you know, like you would assume that it would be the next one. But if not, then I guess the new policy committee, that's something that they could address and fix and just add the word the next one, as long as it's, you know, with, or out, with, outside of the 48 hours, or, you know, whatever the 48 hours thing is. And then with the issue of, you know, some board member adding 40 items to an agenda, I'm right now, the way the policy is written, someone can add 40 discussion items, you know, to them, to the agenda. I'm sure they'll be cut off and they won't be well liked, but, you know, that could happen. So that's all.
I would, my only suggestion to the board, before you go changing all of your board policies about procedures about, is that you probably get some guidance from the Illinois Association of School Boards and have them come do their training and work with you guys, just so that before you start doing those things, you hear a perspective from your organization that represents boards and why they have these in place the way they have it. And the policy two, two, two oh, I mean, the first sentence, Tom, is the school board president is responsible for focusing the board meeting agendas on appropriate content. So it says right there at the beginning of the policy, that is the duty of the board president. And then the line that we're talking about now is that when a member requests it, the superintendent or president shall place the agenda, on the agenda at an upcoming meeting. So again, it's not supposed to be two years out, but it should be.
So I, but it could, but it could be, but it could be two years out, because our policy doesn't, doesn't specify when. So if a, if we have a rogue, if we have a rogue board member or a rogue superintendent, not saying you are Denise or Dr. Olson, but they could, they could derail a topic that a, a board member would want for two, three, four meetings, which we know pushes it out two, three, four months. So, and sometimes, you know, so that what is the recourse for that board member?
Yeah, the board member would bring it up at a, at a board meeting, and a majority of the board would say, hey, we want to hear this about this sooner. Please get it on the next agenda.
I would be okay not changing the policy as long as we have a commitment by, you know, our president and our superintendent that if a board member feels very strongly about an issue and gives the board president ample time to put it on an agenda, or on the, on the agenda for that next meeting, as long as it doesn't cause that next meeting to, you know, go ridiculously, ridiculously long, which for this board would be, would mean three o'clock in the morning for this, not this specific board, but at least one of them that I've been on, would mean that a three o'clock in the morning would be fine. But I, I think it would just be nice as a board member, I, I obviously misread it or never read it, because whenever I asked for something to be put on an agenda at the next meeting, it was always done. I was not, it was never, you know, even a question of whether it should or shouldn't. If I asked for it, it got on there. And if it didn't get on there, or if it wasn't going to be put on there, it was a discussion that was had between myself and a prior board, a prior president, where we actually came to an agreement to not do it. I've never been put in a position where I asked for something and I was told absolutely, was, was just told no, or it just wasn't done. So I, if we have a commitment as a board to, you know, have an unwritten policy rule, then I'm okay with that as well, because I trust everyone on this board to, you know, to do what's best for all of us.
And, and just to point out the distinction, the topic is on the agenda tonight, it's just not for action.
Well, the request was for it to be put on action.
And then, Tony, you're saying it couldn't have been action anyway, but that tonight, well, my, I guess my question is, could this count as the introduction of that policy to the extent that it is introduced, or would that have to happen?
No, there's, there's supposed to be a first reading and a second reading. So it's actually supposed to be a reading of what the, but, like I said, right at the bottom of the policy, majority of the board says we're going to waive that process temporarily, that, then you can do that. And at the next meeting, you can vote on it if it's presented for the first time. So it's simple, it's a majority vote to say, we just want to set aside the policy. You can do that with most of your policies, provided it's not one, obviously, that is dictated by law.
So maybe, maybe Denise, I heard you say earlier that, that you're willing to put it on the agenda for June 3rd, for the, as a special meeting for, just before the cow, or just after the cow. And we could, we could, we could, if the board, the will of the board is to, to pass this policy, then it may make sense to add that then, and we can have, with, with that also, that additional motion that Tony said to override the, the policy.
So, okay, so let's talk about, we can talk about timing. Can we first, just want to, Tony mentioned the IASB training. We're going to talk about that at the end of the meeting during Dr. Olson's report. So we are going to get to that, which I think will be helpful. One of the things, I wonder if we can talk about the policy, and then we can see when it'll go. Let's talk about the actual policy. And Carol, I think, was going to give a little, since she and Rebecca were on the policy committee, just in, just a summary of the pandemic policy and where our board has been. You're on, Carol. Okay, so this is a, just a general overview. Like I said, we did discuss this multiple times. So the first, well, since I was on the policy committee meeting, we discussed this in June, June of 2020. So we receive these little newsletters, they're called Press Issues. Press stands for Policy Reference Education Subscription Service. And that's from the IASB. You guys know what the IASB is. So in the June issue, they had, you know, updates to this policy four colon 180, because, you know, the pandemic had just started. So they made various changes. In addition, they gave us a redlined version, which explains pretty much what they added and the reasons why. So I guess the, the reason this has been so contentious, you know, with the prior board, was basically, I think the issue is the role of the board and the board members versus the role of the superintendent and the administration once we're in the pandemic. So basically, who, you know, what's the scope and what are our duties, you know, and who do we answer to? So let me see if I could find this. There's one footnote that the IASB included in this draft, in its draft of this policy. So for those of you who don't know, you know, I'm saying, you know, the number is a shorthand, but let me just read the title of it, so you know what, what this is called. It's called Pandemic Preparedness Management and Recovery. So, you know, there's a redlined version that we receive from press or the IASB, and they have various footnotes. And so one of the footnotes pretty much sums it up. It says, you know, that we have a new state statute that basically says the district shall adopt a remote and blended remote learning day plan approved by the district superintendent. So that was the end of the. So that was the end of the quote. And the I A S B, their little comment says, for ease of administration, to avoid confusion during implementation and to align with the I A S B foundational principles of effective governance, this policy assigns the duty to adopt the remote and blended remote learning day plan by the district to the board. In alignment with this policy, administrative procedure six colon twenty, remote and or blended remote learning day plans requires the superintendent to approve the plan and present it to the board for adoption prior to the district wide implementation and posting on the district's website. So part of this, um, issue stems from, I guess, what we discussed was, um, a slight ambiguity in the news, in the state statute, you know, who does what, you know, what's the difference between adopt and approve? And basically what is our role? So, um, I know we don't like to, you know, discuss who votes on what, so we won't, but you know, the majority last time did vote to, um, on the policy as is, which says the district, um, shall adopt. And then the interpretation according to what Tony said was that it, you know, if the, if the state, you know, legislature wanted to say board, it could have used the word board. It, it didn't and it used the word district. And so, um, the way we left it was that the board wasn't voting on the plan. It was pretty much presented or the board wasn't adopting the plan. Eric would present it to us.
Yeah, just, so just to, just want everyone to clarify. I, I don't, and I said this a bunch of times, our law firm got a lot of phone calls about this power, this law when it was adopted and, and we're fine one way or another. Um, some districts have gone board approval, others have not. Um, what we were asked is when you read the statutory language, is board approval required? Um, and in the school code, it is clear all over the place. When the board is asked to approve something, it says the board shall approve. Um, now this statute maybe was dropped, drafted softly and maybe it was quickly. But the language they used is the district shall adopt. So it didn't mention the board or approval. Um, the plan that has been approved by the superintendent. So what I did when I got the question is I, I put this to my partner Heather Brickman, who has been, been doing this for thirty years. Her, uh, specialty is board policy development interpretation. She was actually the chairman of the press committee, I A S B for many years. She's been on the committee for many years. So I went to our expert. And she gave the opinion that said, listen, I think boards can go either way here. Um, because again, the language does not say the board shall approve. It says the district shall adopt. And when this, this legislator has said the board shall approve, they've said the board shall approve. So I gave the board the decision. They said, listen, you can go either way. And as Carol said, uh, the majority of the board decided to maintain the statutory language, um, which means in our interpretation that the district will implement or adopt the plan that's approved by the superintendent and it would not necessarily require board approval. Um, and we had a lot of discussion about what that meant and what that looked like and what protections were there for the board. If the superintendent did something that they weren't happy with and we could say, well, we can call a meeting and bring him in and you can direct him um, to do what you guys would like. You always have that opportunity, but, um, now I understand it and, and believe me, this is probably a good time to deal with this policy because it's, we're not living it. I mean, we are, but not like we were in June. Um, and again, I just also want to call the attention that this line is talking about a remote or blended learning plan. It's not everything that has to do with the pandemic. It has to do with when our kids not going to be coming to school. Um, and are going to go to a remote or a hybrid plan. Um, and because that's obviously, as we've all learned over the last year, it's a pretty big deal. Um, so that's what the board wants to discuss again and revisit. And I think, you know, that's, that's probably prudent with new members. And now that we're not in the, the height of the pandemic and we can really see how things have worked out and how some didn't. And, and can we make it better moving forward?
Right. Just to sum it up then, basically, are we going to go with the I A S B, you know, footnote in the recommendation, which does tweak the statutory language a little because it does use the word board instead of district or will we keep it as is?
Yeah. Cause we, if you remember Carol, we actually drafted a resolution on this issue that could go either way and you guys had the option of choosing.
I think it was helpful to get that overview. Denise is okay?
Go ahead Gareth.
Thank you. Um, basically, I think the reason I asked this was as somebody sitting on the other side of the fence during the, the last year, um, watching the board was the, you know, not that, that we were second guessing what necessarily was decided and, and what the superintendent decided. Um, you know, it, it was the fact that the board wasn't endorsing it, wasn't giving it that, that thumbs up that, and wasn't discussing it with the superintendent in, in open session. That left a lot of parents, I think. You know, feeling like, uh, myself included, feeling like the, the board wasn't necessarily following the governance. Um, um, and, and acting on behalf of, of them. It's not that I disagreed with what went on over the past year. I just felt like it, it, it was missing that open discussion, open that debate. Even when I asked, uh, Dr. Olson some questions there about the guidelines early on, um, um, and what's, what's required, what isn't. That, that type of discussion helps people who are watching these meetings, helps parents understand and helps get the message out into the community. And that's really why I, I, you know, it, I have no intent of, of, of requesting these sort of things. Um, every meeting that, uh, Denise will be glad to share. And it was a, it was a, I, I really just wanted to, to have them come, come seen it from the other side, get this back, um, back on the board attention. And, and the I S B in, in, uh, the Illinois Association of School Boards did, did send out some guidance just a couple of weeks ago. Recommending their boards are going to make a change, that they do it soon. So these sort of things, so that, that everybody's ready for the school, next school year. And we don't know if we're completely out of this yet. We don't know what sort of variance could, and heaven forbid that, that there is something that, that comes back. But it's better to be prepared and better to leave a, a, a policy here for the future that, that we think the community would, would, would prefer over the one that was enforced over the last year. So that's why, um, I, I pushed for this, um, so hard over the last week. Um, but I hope that, um, you know, if, if there are, if there is the will of the board, that we can, we can amend this, um, policy, um, and move on.
So I do, I, I appreciate that outside perspective Gareth, as you were watching the board meetings. And so that's helpful. How about Nikki and Phyllis? You would have been in a similar role. Any thoughts there to share?
For me, I would say, having been on the field and the Emerson PTO boards, I would say when you start getting, I'm all about being transparent, but when you start asking parents for opinions and you start letting them, everybody's going to have an opinion and you're not going to make everybody happy. And so even if they were involved in these decisions, somebody's still not going to be happy. And, um, so for that reason, I would just be very cautious about what, how transparent are we, I guess, is the way I'll put it. Like how transparent do we want to be? Because we're not going to make everybody happy. Then it takes to Facebook. Then people start getting rumors out there. And then I think it divides a community rather than bring them together. So for me, I think it's a position of how transparent do we want to be? I mean, I think the district has done a good job of putting the information out there. Did parents want their kids to go back to school full time? One hundred percent. I was one of those parents who did want my kids back in school. Do I want them back in school in the middle of a pandemic when I'm not certain what the next day is going to bring? Absolutely not. So for me, it's a position of how transparent do I want to be and, and do I want parents like emailing me a hundred emails a day based on their opinions? I don't know. That's my thought on it. Nikki, maybe you feel differently.
Um, I'm kind of in between. I have to admit, I, I feel like I see both sides of the coin on this issue. I think, you know, I, I, I see this, this role as a board member as you are, you know, making this decision on behalf of the electorate in your community. Um, and hopefully with, with sound information that you can make those decisions. So I do, I do somewhat agree with, with the policy change. Um, on the flip side, you know, I am cognizant of the impact that, um, a boardsman might have on administration. Um, particularly as it relates to pandemic planning, um, and, and other instances where, uh, some of these decisions need to be made, you know, based on public health and policy guidelines. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm kind of, I have to be honest. Um, I'm kind of in between right now, um, on where I, where I sit on this policy. And I, I really, that's why I'd ask to, to read the proposed changes in a little bit more depth, just to familiarize myself with the process before I make an informed vote.
An interesting point about the law too, which is led to the ambiguity, which again, I can't find this anywhere else in the school code. So let's say they said it, it, someone interpreted that line that the board did have to adopt, that they had to act it. You read on the statute, it says the superintendent can amend it. So again, I, I, there's not many statutes where the board acts and the superintendent then can unilaterally amend it. So we will have to look at that too. I, I think you guys should look at the statute as well as, as the policy.
And Tony, I, 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 I did actually in the language I crafted, I added the following sentence. Given the dynamic nature of any pandemic, the superintendent should periodically review and approve any significant amendments to the plan and present them to the board for adoption.
There you go. Yep.
Because I was cognizant of that exact issue. And I think the other thing is, is that this is, the, the superintendent is still approving it. It's just the board is adopting it. And, you know, to the extent that there are, you know, significant changes, and I, I use the word significant to give, you know, the, the superintendent lea room, uh, you know, uh, leeway, um, mainly because, you know, things happen and, 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 and things, but, but the board can actually gather uh, under, uh, an emergency situation such as this can gather at very short notice as long as a quorum of five can be reached. So I think there's, there's, there's some balance in the way that I wrote it, um, which unfortunately people don't have that word in. But I, I think that if, if that could help allay, um, uh, people, other board members' concerns that, that this is, this is at the end of the day, this is allowing people to see that the board is, is assessing a way in those risks. It's not about whether the kids, um, where we, we wanted to send them back to school or not, uh, and whether our, it's more of asking the superintendent in, in open session, um, you know, the reasons why he, he decided those things and then supporting him in that decision. So the fallback isn't going to superintendent, it goes back in the board for approving it, which is the right thing in my mind. It shouldn't be, um, um, the superintendent, um, that, that, that takes the, you know, the, 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 all the emails that are coming from, from locally. It should be the board, uh, in the governance role that's, that's owning this, um, and being, having the, having that final, the buck stops here, kind of vote up or down. Um, so that they can take, you know, after assessing the risks that the, the superintendent has, has approved and, and presented to them, um, that, that they take that, that ownership of it and adopt it and approve it. So that, that was the point of, the, the point that I was trying to, trying to get to. And, um, that's why the word, I suggested the word and I did.
Yep.
Well, there's, there's several of us, there's several of us that, that were on this board when we discussed this before Gareth and uh, I, I agree with, I agree with you on this issue. I, I actually voted to, uh, have the board take some of that responsibility off of the superintendent back then. I do want to say though clearly on this board meeting that, uh, in, in light of the emergency nature of a lot of the decisions that were made, uh, I do see the value in Dr. Olson, uh, having the authority and the, and the support uh, by the board when they voted to allow him to make those decisions, uh, because of the quick nature that he had to make a lot of those decisions. We were in the, we were in the thick of the pandemic when, you know, he took this on. I want to congratulate you, Dr. Olson, for the way you handled it. Uh, I think you did an exactly, a great job. Uh, having said that, we are, at least for now, are not in the thick of it. And a lot of the decisions that are going to be made moving forward, especially for next year's school year, uh, are, are decisions that I think can include the board and should include the board. And there are, there are going to be a lot of decisions that we're going to have some guidance. We're going to have other guidance that's going to be changing. Things look as if they're going to be opening up, uh, and there's going to be some decisions that need to be made for next year. Um, that, that I think the board should have the opportunity to weigh in on, uh, more so than they did, you know, over this past year. Not to say, I want to also clarify, if the prior board wanted to Gareth, we could have at a meeting told Dr. Olson, we don't like what, what you're doing and we're overriding you. Am I right, Tony? We had that right?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. So, so it's not as if, it's not as if, you know, by not, uh, by not having the authority to do or, or by, by not voting to have the, or to be obligated to vote, to give him the authority to do things that we stripped ourselves of the ability to trump him if we ever wanted to. Uh, just, he did such a great job. We never had to. Um, but more so, but I do believe that moving forward at, at the rate of the, the rate of speed of the way the decisions are going to be needed to be made moving forward and how they're going to impact a brand new school year, I feel a lot more comfortable now, uh, really pushing to, to take on some of that responsibility as a board.
Um, you know, when I think a lot of what Gareth described, as Tom was saying, I think we did as a board without the formal voting action. You know, so I, I think a lot of that was in place. Okay. So let's moving forward. Um, Rebecca, we didn't hear from you. I know you love talking about the pandemic policy.
It's been a year. I can't wait. If we can keep talking about it after we vote, that'd be great too. Um, I have not, uh, changed my mind about this in the last year. And I do want to say that I would like for us to vote and that is not, I think that Eric did a great job and we agreed with his decisions. Like we said, as a board, if we didn't, we would have done something about it. What has bothered me pretty much since we've been in the thick of this is I felt there were times where Eric was left out to dry. Not that that was anyone's intention and I felt very guilty about that. And I felt like we should have shared some of that responsibility. And I know that Eric has, you know, has reassured me personally a couple of times that, that wasn't how he, but that it, I just felt like we were elected and we should have shouldered more of that. Pub, more of the public response than we did. And so my vote, as many things are in my life, is out of guilt. And personal responsibility.
Okay. Um, so I, I think where we go from here, i- if I'm what I'm hearing and help me out if, if I'm not, um, if I didn't gather this correctly, if we think about our, um, committee of the whole on June third, if we consider adding a, a special meeting to that for the first reading of this policy. Correct? Okay. And then we can do the second reading if the board chooses on our regular meeting on June twenty third. And I believe that's also the evening that Dr. Olson would have more specifics to share about the fall. Correct Eric?
That's not how I, uh, I would see it as today would be, would have been the first reading. And the next meeting would be the second. And if we don't consider today the first reading, then I would like to invoke what Tony said we can do and get the first reading and second reading, uh, and vote done on the next meeting. I don't want to, we're, the, the reason why I just, so everyone knows why I think it's more, it's, it, we have an urgency is because we don't have very, very many meetings left before the next start of the school year. And I feel that we owe it to Dr. Olson, we owe it to this board and we owe it to the people that voted us here to have multiple discussions on how the next school year is going to go. And I think if we're going to be taking on the responsibility, uh, to be involved in that, I don't think we should be doing it right after the school year starts or with maybe one meeting before we, we recess for the summer. Um, so I think that's, I think there's an actual urgency, uh, issue matter here that we can invoke to speed this along a little quicker. My, that's just my feeling.
No, no, no. So that's good. So how about other folks? So that was Tom's perspective.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I just, I'm totally fine voting on this on the next meeting. Like we've talked about it. I, I've read it through. Um, I'm fine voting on it at the next meeting. I just didn't want to do it tonight at the very first meeting, right out of the gate. I'm totally fine doing it June third.
I'm okay with voting. Uh, I would just like to see Garrett's proposed language. Um, but I just want a clarification then of if we are voting on whether we are remote or not remote, if that, if that decision's being brought to the board um, or the type, the situational learning, wherever it's taking place, remote, in person, hybrid. I guess I'm just, as, as far as the urgency piece goes, in the next month, are we making, I mean, since we're out of session, out of school, would we be up to a vote that would require that decision-making happen immediately? And if I'm, I mean, just if, if somebody has that information, that would just be helpful for me.
Dr. Olson, you want to chime in here?
Sure. Um, you know, with everything with the pandemic, it's a little bit of a guess. Um, so, you know, because I don't know what's coming two weeks from now. But in all likelihood, um, there shouldn't be anything that we would come to the board that quickly with. So first ISB and IDPH are going to put out the guidance. Then we have to synthesize and understand what it all means. Then we start talking about what the impact is going to be on staff. Then we're talking with the board, we're talking with staff, we're getting to a place where we're comfortable. And then we're going public, um, with that information. um, with that information. So, um, I don't see how all those things could happen before June 24th. Um, but at the same time, I do understand what some board members are saying, and if we need to get it done sooner, we certainly can.
Yeah. I mean, what you can specifically consider right now that we, that we think we know with certainty is that next year, and again, it could change. It's, it sounds like, and I think Dr. Olson hit on this, the state is going to mandate that you at least offer it to kids that are medically fragile or living with somebody med, so that again, the, the, the statute has three elements. We have to be under a disaster proclamation, which we are. The state board has to mandate that we offer remote learning somehow, which sounds like that's going to happen on a very limited basis. Um, and then obviously it goes to how does the district then implement, approve, adopt, who's doing that kind of issue? So I think the realist issue right now, knock on wood, hopefully, is just the fact that we'll have to offer remote to a small group of students that have a medical condition or live with somebody that has a medical condition.
Could I ask Tony a, a, a quick question? Is, is, because it's a special meeting and, you know, i- if it's labeled up as final action, do you also have to have a motion on the agenda to bypass the policy?
No, no procedural issue like that can come up on the spot. Um, just like going, just like going into closed session. You can go into closed session, even if it's not on the agenda, you guys could take a vote to move into closed session. Um, so something procedural like that comes up, you can do that, um, motion to table, like you brought up, things like that. Um, but actually going back, if it's an action item, we just, again, the rule is we have to be adequately specific so the public knows what we're doing. Um, and just for you guys new, before I go through your OMA training, the rule that I said about discussion items that can come up at any time, it's only for regular board meetings. A special meeting, you also have to have the discussion item on the agenda for you to be able to discuss it at that meeting.
Okay. So it sounds like, um, some folks say there may not be urgency, but I think folks would say, let's see if we can get this, um, voted on, on June 3rd, right? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Nothing else about the pandemic policy. Okay. All right. So we have one more policy to discuss and Rebecca is going to lead us on that one.
Yes. So, um, this is about our public comment spiel. Um, and you heard Denise read the one earlier and then the one in front of you. I won't read it. You can see it. Um, and the difference between the two really is, uh, tone and length. I think part of our having mutual respect with our constituents is assuming best intentions. And I've been either on the board or in the audience for most of our rowdiest meetings in the last four and a half years. And some of the things we warn people not to do in our public comment are extremely rare, even at our nuttiest ones, like people aren't inciting violence. So I just think that it sets a better tone to be a little more general in it, um, in the way, and I still think that we cover all the ground. We're still talking about setting appropriate expectations. It's just in a little bit more of a gentler way. I would say our current policy sort of has a tone of, I dare you to come at me. And this policy more has a tone of, let's just all be polite. And less importantly, this one's just shorter. Um, I think we are, we give three minutes for public comment, and I think it takes at least a minute and a half to read the intro. So that's, so this isn't, um, you know, life or death. It's just, I've been dying for this thing to be shorter as an editor for a while. And then the tone is really just a, just sort of how you want to start the meeting. I just, it really, just every time we say it sticks in my craw that we say insight to violence at every start of a school board meeting. So that's really the difference in these two.
And the wording Rebecca is talking about came out through the policy committee last year with you and Carol, correct?
Right. That's got to be last winter, February. It was a long time ago. So this, I just pulled this back up from what we had from before.
The one issue I just want to say that actually I, I agree with you about the, those, those, that language is, is from case law about the First Amendment. Those are the exceptions to the First Amendment. Um, and I didn't think it was necessary to put the all there, but the board wanted to, and that was fine. The only thing I'm going to comment on, even in the new language, is the thing that says, but please do not make comments concerning individual students or staff members. And the reason that's important is I think you need to soften that. Um, be, uh, we, we, we ask you not to. We, we prefer that you not to, um, because they have the right to do it. And that, that language that you guys went to is actually came from another school district that got sued. Um, because they had that language like you had, and the board president thought, well, I can stop people. And they, she did. And they got sued and, and they had to pay out a pretty hefty settlement because that was a violation of those people's First Amendment rights. So my only comment on this language would be soften the please do not, you know, just make it please refrain from, or we ask you respectfully not to. Um, but at the end of the day, you got to know if someone does it, you got to let them. Unless they are being completely inappropriate.
Right. And that's, that's my fault. That had come some versions later and I forgot to update it. That was my fault that I grabbed the wrong one. You're right.
Yeah, we have a version that has the, um, the softened language. And then what Tony was referring to is the Board of Ed of Rich Township High School District 227. And their language that was problematic said, please refrain from mentioning the name of students and employees.
That's one. And then Hinsdale 86 happened last year.
So we just had to add up, we, we, we ask you to.
That's right.
That's easy. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That was the update you had, right, Carol?
Yeah, correct. That was it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Any, any discussion on, on that, that preamble to public comment?
I, I'm supportive of the change. I think, you know, to having more public participation in our meetings, um, by an informed citizenry is, is, is what we, we should strive for. Um, so I support a more welcoming tone.
And I support public comment at the public comment, but then when this is happening, it's a meeting of the board and the public can see it. Right. Okay. All right. We're moving on from policy. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Let's continue on our agenda. Um, next we have a good, a good excitement. We, um, have an appointment of an, the Emerson Middle School Assistant Principal. So I will hand it over to Dr. Olson.
Thank you. Um, yes, it is exciting. Uh, we have a new, um, associate principal for, um, Emerson Middle School with the retirement of Mr. Banka. And, um, Louis Kotfis, um, stood out, um, for us as a strong candidate, um, throughout the process. I think two key pieces, um, that we found in his background is one, he's already been an interim assistant principal. So he's already lived in the role. He can speak to a lot, um, of the pieces that go on in that role. And so we feel that we're already bringing in somebody who has experience. And then the other piece is that in his background, he's also been an instructional coach. Um, and, you know, a lot of administration is coaching. Um, and so a lot of the techniques and the learning that he's done in that area, I think will aid him greatly. Um, when he's at Emerson. So, um, the team, um, was very excited about him and, um, I think everyone's um, looking forward to the possibility. Um, so, um, we present, uh, him to the board tonight, um, for approval. Um, and, uh, and look forward to doing that. Thanks, Denise.
All right. All right. Well, why don't we see if there's a motion and then, uh, we can have some discussion if there's any.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the appointment of Lewis Kotfis as the Assistant Principal of Emerson Middle School effective July 27th, 2021.
Second.
All right. Rebecca had the motion. Gareth had the second. Uh, how about discussion from the board members?
All right. Discussion, the only discussion I have is, I'm sure he's going to do wonderfully, but I just want everyone to know how missed Mr. Banka is going to be.
Yes. I agree with you, Tom, but Louis is going to come in. Louis, would you like to say something?
Absolutely. Thank you. And yeah, I have heard such amazing things about Emerson, about the staff, the community. And Mr. Banka, I mean, I've just heard the living legend himself. So I'm, I'm so excited to be joining the, uh, the team and the community. And, um, thank you so much.
All right. All right, Louis. Well, welcome to Emerson. Welcome to District 64. You have a great team of administrators and staff there. And so we're confident that you'll add to that community. All right. All right. Well, congratulations. All right. All right. Thank you, Louis. All right.
I, I just want to make sure, did we do the vote? Did we get a vote?
No, we didn't, Eric. That's a great reminder. I was so excited about Louis that I didn't do the vote. All right.
Okay.
All right, Phyllis, you're on.
All right. Waitovich?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Sodos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Seles?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Denise, you forgot to do it because you, we all knew how strong of a candidate he was. So you just assumed it was going to, you just assumed it was going to be yeses across the board.
Tom, you covered me. You knew it. Thank you. All right. All right. We're going to move on. I, let me see if we can get the next one right. All right. So, um, next we have a short personnel report. And so, um, we can look at that. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the personnel report dated May 13th, 2021, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
I second.
All right. So Gareth had the motion. Phyllis had the second. Um, how about any discussion on the personnel report? All right. Hearing no discussion, uh, let's take a vote.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
And Seles? Yes. Sodos?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Waitovich?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. Okay. Uh, now we'll move on to our consent agenda. And if the board members look through what is in the agenda, does anything need to be pulled out before we vote on the whole consent agenda? Okay. All right. Hearing none. Uh, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the consent agenda for May 13th, 2021, which includes bills, payroll and benefits, approval of financial updates for the period ending March 31st, 2021, approval of the amended intergovernmental agreement for shared vision, O and M services and destruction of audio closed recordings, none.
Second.
All right. Nikki had the motion. Rebecca had the second. Um, how about discussion about any of the items in the consent agenda? All right. No questions. All right. I think we can move to a vote then.
All right. Sodos?
I, I vote yes, but can I ask a question? Well, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask a question. Can the new, can the new board members vote on minutes and stuff?
That's next. And no, they can't vote on the April 29th minutes. They, no.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. The next, I was just.
We'll get to that next.
Right. I was just looking at, but your answer is no. It's going to have to be the rest of you.
Okay. Okay.
Good call, Tom. All right. So you still vote yes?
I'd vote yes.
Yes. Seles? Yes. Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. All right. We will continue. Uh, we have the approval of minutes. And as Tom just mentioned, good call on that, is we have, um, minutes from our special meeting and then our organizational meeting from April 29th. All right. So let's see if there is a motion here to start.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the minutes from the special meeting on April 29th, 2021, and the organizational meeting on April 29th, 2021.
So I think you may have to split that motion in half, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Cause I think we have to split it in half because part of us can vote on the special meeting. Okay. All right. So let's, let's, you need to rescind your motion.
I was so rescinded. And then just, we can just read half of it.
Okay. So let's just do the motion of for the.
We'll do it, we'll do it, we'll do it twice. Just when you do it, when you do the first one, you leave out one meeting. And when you do the other one, leave out the other meeting.
Okay. It's a lot of pressure.
Got this.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the minutes from the special meeting on April 29th, 2021.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Rebecca had the motion for the special meeting. Eric, Carol had the second. And we can take a vote, but just the former board members are voting in this instance.
And the three would abstain.
Do we abstain or vote present, uh, Tony?
It means the same thing, but yes, either one.
Yep.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Yes.
Seles?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, you got it. You got to go through the other three as well and let them, let them abstain. Yeah.
Lubinski abstain. Uh, Waitovich?
Abstain.
Kennedy?
Present.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So now, um, let's see if we have a motion about the minutes for the organizational meeting. Rebecca.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the minutes from the organizational meeting on April 29th, 2021.
Second.
Rebecca had the motion. Carol again had the second. Any discussion on those minutes?
Everyone can vote on this one because we were all seated at the time that this happened.
Thank you, Tom. All right.
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Waitovich?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Seles?
Yes.
Motion carry.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. Okay. And we are on to, um, our other discussion items. Superintendent, uh, has some information. So Dr. Olson, take it away.
Sure. Um, I think everybody knows the two upcoming meetings as we've talked about the dates, uh, pretty extensively tonight. Uh, June 3rd is our special meeting and then June 24th is our next regular meeting. Um, I did want to, um, point out that, you know, in your packet is our annual district profile. Um, and as you can see, you know, for a consecutive, I think it's 12 years, um, going that, you know, we have, um, scored, you know, this well. Um, so my, uh, compliments to Luanne and her department. Um, as it is just another example of, um, how well, um, Luanne is leaving us in terms of, um, our financial stability. Um, and how the state, uh, recognizes us for how we, um, participate financially. So, um, congratulations to Luanne once again. And then, um, as Denise had hinted at earlier, uh, we thought this might be a good time to talk about the IASB training. Um, and so I can, um, give that back to her.
Okay. So, um, there we, IASB offers several training, a lot of training opportunities. And so one of them is just when a trainer from IASB will come to your board and work on your board forming a team and some policies and some of the things that Tony mentioned, uh, a while ago in our conversation. And so we want to find a time to do that. However, so it will probably be this summer. And, um, the only thing we might, Eric and I might ask is that you communicate if you have any vacations or, you know, things in your schedule where you're not available. So when we start looking at some, some times with IASB. Or, you know, things in your schedule where you're not available. So when we start looking at some some times with IASB. We know some some areas or weeks or days where board members will be might be available. Okay, so if you can let, or if you can let me know, you know, somewhere if you have some things in plan that you're not available. Let's think June and July, that would be helpful.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Dr. Olson, were you giving an enrollment update?
Yeah, so you know, normally, so these just are kind of on the agenda and in a normal year. You know, we're really tracking and watching the numbers, you know, piece by piece. Unfortunately, we are still doing that. But because of the pandemic and also because a lot of the staffing that we're gonna recommend for next year. We want to see based on the test scores of how students do at the end of the year and that we're responding appropriately. So I think it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, that will all come on June 24 as we consider those pieces as well.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So does any of the board members have any new business? No new business. Okay, so then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Gareth had the motion, Rebecca had the second. And we need to take a vote. All right, so Phyllis, one last time.
Let's see, Little?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Whitovich?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Kennedy?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Seles?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn carries.
All right, so we are adjourned. Thanks for a productive conversation tonight, and we'll see everyone on June 3.